Led by Mr. Buckles.
Yes, ma'am.
All stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend James Ritchie, if you'll come up for the invocation.
Thank you. What a privilege.
Thank you so much. Let's pray together. Father, we are so indeed grateful, Lord, for the privilege it is to be able to call upon your name. And God, we're so thankful, God, that we have a God that'll turn this ear our way, Lord, when we call upon his name. And God, we thank you, Lord, that you hush heaven, God, to hear your child speak, and we thank you for that. Lord, I pray to the right now, God, for this board meeting. God, you knew before the foundations of the earth, God, who was going to be here, what the agenda was going to be, and God, what we're going to talk about today. And I just pray, God, that the Spirit of God would be in the place today, God, and I pray that it would direct the hearts of the leaders that's in here. God, I just pray for a good, clean meeting. I pray, God, that there's no confusion or strife, or whatever the case might be. God, I just pray, God, that you'd have clarity of all of our thoughts and, God, what you're going to do. I pray for these children this board represents. God, there's so many, Lord, and I just pray, God, that in each and every one of their lives, God, that you would have your will and have your way. And I pray a protective hedge around about them, God, that, Lord, that you would just protect them, God, as they go through their public school life. We love you, Lord, so much, and we're so thankful, God, once again, that you've given us a day that we can just claim the praises and the promises of God. We love you, Lord. We thank you for us in Christ's name. Amen. And amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with our presentations. In the first one, we have an update on collegiate high schools, and we have two people here who I greatly admire, President Joe Pickens, President of St. John's River State College, and Dr. Melanie Brown, one of our vice presidents at St. John's River State College. If you'd like to come up and make your presentation. We've got a handout that Dr. Brown gave us.
Well, thank you. We wanted to come today to provide you an update on the collegiate high schools that we have here in Putnam County. We started this program last fall at two of the high schools here in Putnam County, and we did that with the support of the board. And we just wanted to give you an update a year in and let you know where we are and where we plan to go in the next academic year. To just kind of give you a reminder of the components of the collegiate high school and what this program does for students. Basically, the collegiate high schools create an opportunity for the cohort of eligible students to enroll in college-level classes and earn their associate arts and arts degree, all while enrolled in high school. So the students who are in the program will take, starting in grades ninth grade, in grades nine through 11, they'll take a set sequence of courses at the high school classes at the high school site, at Palaca and at Interlochen High School, in combination with their high school courses. By the time they finish 11th grade, they will have completed 30 high school credits, or 30 college credits, all at the high school site. During 12th grade, they'll be enrolled full-time at the Palaca campus of SJR State, where they'll take the 30 college credits, so that the 30 credits in grades nine, 10, and 11, 30 credits as a senior, and then that'll be the 60 credits required for the AA. And they'll graduate with their senior year with both their high school diploma and their AA. So this program really streamlines that process, the dual enrollment process, by laying out a sequence of courses and making the dual enrollment process quite simple. It takes the guesswork out of what classes do I take by bringing the first half of the dual enrollment courses to the high school site. That's what makes the collegiate high school different between traditional dual enrollment and the collegiate high school, that commitment to bringing those courses to the high school site. The eligibility for the collegiate high school is pretty much the same as the eligibility for traditional dual enrollment, but it brings the eligibility requirement down to the eighth grade. Students, as an eighth grader, must have taken a high school, at least one academic high school course as an eighth grader, and have a 3.0 in that academic coursework and a high school GPA of a 3.0 overall. Eligible students have to apply in order to participate, and then if they're, if we have the minimum, if we have enough applicants, then they'll be entered into a lottery. We're going to accept up to 60 ninth graders into the collegiate high school. Ultimately, we hope to have that many applicants at both Palaca High School and at Interlochen. So I think you can already see what the advantages of the collegiate high school would be. This, in addition to just simply having the ability to earn your AA while you're still in high school, the program is academically rigorous. It's bringing that college prep program. There's no better program to prepare students for college than college courses themselves. It's not college prep. It is college. So the collegiate high school is designed to provide students with academic challenge, to help them develop critical thinking skills, higher-order thinking skills. In addition to that, though, it's going to provide students with exposure to a college campus while they're still living at home, while they're still in high school, and to give them that real experience in college while they still have the security of being in high school and that support system of home. And this, obviously, the collegiate high school is an accelerated pathway to a college degree or degrees. We want to talk about who pays for this. The most important thing, obviously, for students and parents is they do not. Dual enrollment is completely free for students and parents. They're statutory, statutorially exempt from the payment of textbooks, fees, tuition, anything along those lines. The school district is not charged tuition for any courses that are taught at the high school site. So when you think about what we were talking about, at least half of the credits taken will be free because they'll be at the high school site. Courses taken on our campus, the district pays a reduced tuition. They don't even pay the full tuition. So we have a negotiated reduced tuition. The college's tuition is, we are currently charging $108 a credit hour, dual enrollment students. The school district pays $71.98 per credit hour. So it is a reduced tuition rate there. So the school district will receive, obviously, the full FTE for all dual-enrolled students, even during that senior year, when 100% of the coursework will be on our campus. So that's something to keep in mind. And so tuition for those 30 credits during the senior year will be $2,375, which is well below the 7,000-plus FTE that the district will receive. I share this with you because to really emphasize that this is a true financial partnership between the district and the college. We won't be, the college won't be receiving any funds in grades nine, 10, and 11, while we're just providing all that free tuition for students. And then during the senior year, we'll be receiving a way reduced tuition, and then the district would still be earning some FTE as well, considerably more than what you'd be paying for the students as well. So we do view it as a true partnership, and one in which who benefits is the students and the parents. You can also see what the out-of-pocket savings is for the students and the parents. When you think that a 60-credit AA at $108 per credit hour, that works out to the tuition of $6,480, none of which students will have to pay. Approximate textbook cost for 60 credits is almost $3,000. So the cost of the textbooks and tuition for the associate in arts degree is estimated at today's cost to be about $9,320, none of which students would pay as for participating in the collegiate high school. So we're very excited about that. The next page of the packet that I shared with you is just to give you some enrollment numbers of who we have in the collegiate high school right now. At Palaca High School, we just finished our first class of ninth graders, so I'm calling them 10th graders now, because they're rising into the 10th grade. They're the class of 2021. They started as our cohort of 2017-18. We began with a class of 40 students at Palaca High School. We currently have in that class about 33 students. We think that's a good number. We knew we would lose some. Some realized, okay, college, this isn't quite for me. The reality is, it wasn't necessarily the college classes that some of them didn't do well in. The first college classes we had them take were college success skills and life and career development. If you think about what is the right class, the best class to have college student, or ninth grader start in, we thought college success skills would be the right class. So most of them, you know, they did well in that, but they might not have done so well, say, in a science class or a math class. We certainly don't want students doing well in their college classes and not doing well in their high school classes. So some students just couldn't continue with us, and we expected that, and so we're pleased with those numbers. We had students engaging and participating and engagement activities at the college. So we've had our librarians from the college visit the high schools to show them, okay, these are your, this is your library card to the college, and get them logged on to the college's library system. They're college students. We want them using the college IDs. We brought them to the college for library tours, for tours of our campuses. We're showing them how to use EdReady, which is a college tool to get them ready in math and in English, to increase those readiness skills. In terms of our ninth grade class, our class of 2022, we've admitted 32 students so far, and we're continuing to accept applications for the upcoming class of ninth graders. So we're excited about that. We wanted to acknowledge, and we're also continuing to recruit students who had originally been at QI Roberts but are returning to their home school of Palaca High, and we to provide them the collegiate high school as an academically rigorous program right there at Palaca High. So any of those students who are, you know, I don't want to be there anymore, they're returning to their home school, this is an option for them to enter as 10th graders, even though they weren't there as their ninth grade class. We're very impressed and pleased to have worked with the principals, Mr. Stout, the guidance counselors there. They've been very helpful in making this program work. So we wanted to acknowledge that. At Interlochen, look at the numbers there. We began with 18 students, and we currently have 26. You might wonder how that works. That is not a typo. That worked in a little different direction, and that only happened because of Mr. Helms and the guidance counselors out there. They really hit the streets and worked. And between the first days of school and, say, January, we had that class grow there considerably. Some of the students we picked up from QI, and others, it was just simply students who didn't know about the program, hadn't heard about it, and teachers helped identify, hey, these students really belong in the collegiate high school, so we're making it work.
Did they start second semester, or were they able to?
They started second semester. So they're one class behind, and what we've done with them is we've had them make up that first class this summer. And so we're getting them back on track so that they will have all those courses that they need in order to keep going. So we're very excited about that out there. We've been doing the same engagement activities with them to keep them on track, and you can see that that program is really, the word of mouth is picking up out there. We've admitted 30 students so far for next fall, and again, we're continuing to recruit more students out there as well. So we're very excited about those opportunities there. Yes.
Traditionally, go ahead.
I'm just concerned. I hear Palaca High, Interlochen High, and QI. What about Crescent City? Is it the distance, the transportation? Why?
Well, we offered, this is an example of our expansion of our acceleration programs. We expanded Cambridge to Crescent City High.
Yes.
And of course, we have it at QI Roberts, and we wanted to offer Palaca High and Interlochen High the Collegiate High School. So again, every high school has an option of an acceleration program.
Okay, so Palaca High does not have Cambridge.
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so there's an Interlochen, but they, we do have dual enrollment at Crescent City. They just do not have the collegiate high school.
That's correct.
We have a collegiate high at two of the four schools.
I was going to mention that traditionally, we've lost a lot of students in the West End to the old, the program at East.
Santa Fe?
IB.
The IB program, International Baccalaureate Program. But, I mean, with the college coming on strong like you guys are doing, I think you're pulling those kids back. And instead of them bailing out on us to go to the IB program, they're staying. And I think, you know, I have to rely on Ms. Crawford because of her background in working with credit recovery and guidance and, but I mean, I'm looking at the numbers here, which from 2017, just dual enrollment alone in collegiate high school, and we're looking like it's, with counting the virtual, putting the virtual, that's 44 student increase. I think that's wonderful.
So this, the last page of your packet that I gave you, is our enrollment numbers?
Sorry to bounce a head.
No, that's okay. He's helping me turn the page for me. So the last page here is, the top is Fall 2017, the bottom is Spring 2018. So this is just a snapshot of last academic year and our enrollment. And this page includes, and you were actually doing the same thing that he was poking me on the shoulder to do. So this includes both dual enrollment and the collegiate high school. So what I was talking about thus far was just the collegiate high school, and that is not the only option that we have for students. I wanted to highlight that, and when I asked to come today, was I wanted to give you an update on that and really to thank the district, the principals, everyone who have put effort and energy into moving the collegiate high school forward. But I also wanted to highlight, we haven't forgotten about regular dual enrollment, you know, regular dual enrollment. That is still an option out there for students, and for students at Palaca High School, at Interlochen, at QI, and at Crescent City. We are still doing dual enrollment. That hasn't gone away. And students can still come to our campus here in Palaca and do traditional dual enrollment. The collegiate high school is not for everyone. Not, everyone does not want to commit to that rigorous pathway, and not everyone wants to start dual enrollment in ninth grade. They're not all ready, and whether it's academically ready or emotionally ready for that. And we acknowledge that, and we certainly aren't pushing everyone down that pathway. But there are students who are ready, and so we wanted to have that option for the students who were ready. But we have many dual enrollment courses, and some of them are a mix of collegiate high school courses, or courses that are made up of some collegiate high school students and some traditional dual enrollment students who are in 11th or 12th grade. So we, it makes, that's some of what, how we're making up some of these classes, some of these sections at different schools.
Well, I know that we have a huge number of dual enrollment students because we're processing the applications up in record. So those numbers are great.
Yes, we have a very large dual enrollment program in all three of our counties, and we're looking to see it grow. One of the things that I'm looking, you know, I'm hopeful and looking forward to, you know, this past academic year, we did not have any students in Putnam County who graduated with their AA. And, you know, that doesn't need to happen every year, but I think that the reason that that is, is because we did not have a clear pathway laid out for students. And so the students who were fortunate enough to make that happen, they made it happen for themselves. They kind of scrambled around and tried to figure it out, and they're like, okay, if I take this class as a 10th grader, and then they had to really work at it quite hard themselves, because there weren't the right sequence of courses laid out at the high school site, and they had to come to our campus a lot at a young age in order to make it happen. And so the collegiate high school makes it a lot more realistic for more students to meet that goal. Bright Futures, you know, Bright Futures will pay for graduate credits, believe it or not, if you earn, if you haven't burned through it on your AA. So you can work towards a master's degree on Bright Futures if you haven't used those credits already on an AA. Now, that's not for everyone, but hey, for those students that it is an option for, that can be a huge financial savings. And so it's something that we'd like to make a reality for more students.
Some years ago, the phrase was coined seamless. It became popular everywhere. It was going to, we're going to have a seamless way to go. But now, more than ever, I think the opportunity with St. John's River State College, we have more opportunities to have a seamless pathway for more kids to, you know, like, now they don't have to bail out and go to the IB program in the other county. They can avail themselves of what we have available, and it's just getting better. So, and it's a pleasure to have you speak instead of Dr. Pickens. I'm just messing with him.
Well, and speaking of IB, in one of our other counties, we talked bluntly with some of the folks there, you know, how many people start off in IB, and how many people actually graduate with the IB diploma? And, you know, they'll start off with a class of 100 and graduate with maybe 20. And it's, it's not a guarantee that you actually get the IB diploma, and without the IB diploma, you don't get the college credit, as we all know. But I don't think students really understand that. And, you know, with, even if you don't actually earn the AA, the college credits you get are the college credits that you get.
And you don't lose them.
Yeah, they're yours. So it is, for the majority of students, it's a much, it's much closer to a guarantee than some of the other acceleration mechanisms. So.
And I appreciate the fact that, I know when the, when it changed and said we'd be paying for dual enrollment, it was like, oh, no, how can we, you know, as a budget concern, but this has been a very great partnership for our community, and I'm thankful because I see the numbers, and they're still really high. It's not like we're not discouraging them, and the pathway is a huge part because of, again, they're trying to do the night classes or the online classes or the summer classes. So this has been a really a great opportunity for those students. And again, appreciate that.
And we're definitely moving in the right direction as a district, offering a pathway for our students. So we do appreciate that.
I have a couple of questions. You said eligible students in the ninth grade. What are the, what makes them eligible?
It's not that, the eligibility standards are, it's not that rigorous, but it does require some education on their part. They have to take a high school academic course as an eighth grader. So they have to be taking, like, Algebra I as an eighth grader, and they have to earn a 3.0 or higher, an unweighted 3.0 or higher in that course. They have to have a 3.0 GPA or higher in their academic courses as an eighth grader. So, but that's really it. They don't have to have an SAT score or an ACT score or anything like that as an eighth grader. But they have to, what excludes some students is having taken a high school academic course as an eighth grader.
And are we in the middle schools?
Promoting.
Promoting that in the, for the eighth graders, you know what I'm saying, as a district?
I think, yes. I believe we are. To the appropriate population. We don't want to push students who aren't, we don't want to push the wrong students into those courses for the wrong reasons. But I do believe that you are.
Well, and those counselors that are in our middle schools are very aware of the students.
They look at their seventh grade scores and make recommendations.
And they, you know, they can take the Algebra I and the Biology and...
And I know, I know Dr. Pickens gets tired of me calling him from time to time, but with the opportunities we now have with the college and our vocational career tech-type opportunities that we're in the process of trying to get up and going in a, you know, super fashion, it's going to be a great, I think it's wonderful. It's something I wanted for a long time, and I can, I can hardly believe it's coming to fruition. It's just great.
Ms. Jorgensen had a couple of other questions. QI Roberts, you mentioned taking 10th graders and getting them into the program. What about 11th and 12th?
They are welcome to join at whatever space available. But it starts to become tricky to complete the entire AA the later that they join. But they are, well, because it's just, if they don't have the...
I think they'll get the same amount of credits.
Right. It starts to become, they, they potentially could if they took a large number of summer classes and things like that. We just can't guarantee that they can make it to the finish line.
And is there a limit on the number of seats?
Well, it's, at a certain point, you know, the district is, we've so far been saying we're going to try, you know, shoot for 60 students per school, and we haven't hit that number. That would be two sections of the courses, and that would be sustainable. You know, you could, everybody can't be in it because you wouldn't be able to offer enough sections. It would be great if we had to do a lottery. We would love to have to do a lottery where we had so many students. Now, if we did a lottery, if we did a lottery, we would be committed to it being a true lottery. We wouldn't rank people based, and we've had to do a lottery in Clay and in St. John's Counties, where we've had more applicants than seats. And we have done a true lottery, where everyone who turned their application in on time, who met the qualifications, we put their names on a spreadsheet, and we hit shuffle. That leads to a lot of people who are like, well, my GPA was higher than theirs. We're like, too bad, so sad. It was a lottery. Everyone who's qualified.
Met the minimum requirements.
Correct. And so it's a true lottery. Yeah.
Terrific. And that was all my questions. I want to thank Mr. Pickens very much for his dedication to Putnam County. I realize that. And both of you for all you've done for us students and our schools. It's wonderful. President Pickens, would you like to say anything?
Well, I want to tell David Buckles, I would have worn a sweater vest, but it was just too hot. But you understand that.
Sweater vest man, yeah.
What I, one of the things that wasn't mentioned, but should be obvious in the numbers, is you don't forget all of the things that you learned as a school board attorney for 17 years, even though there are some things that you would like to. But recognizing that we're a Title I district, and one thing that Dr. Brown didn't talk about is, she did talk about you're saving money in your Bright Futures, you're doing this. Well, imagine the most needy students saving $7,000 or $8,000 in Pell Grant that they can also use to start getting their bachelor's degree and moving on. So, you know, the message I want to deliver to all the parents that might see this is, we talked to, as you know, when I became the president, we started bringing every eighth grader onto our campus and started talking to them about why they should be thinking about college now, not when they're a senior or not at all, and why college is affordable for everyone, and that the most needy students and families are the ones that are eligible for the most aid. Well, that's still true, but right now, it also means that that aid can take them much farther. Right now, most, that's not true, not most, many, too many of our Pell Grant eligible students also take out student loans because they're automatically eligible for a loan if they're eligible for the Pell Grant. At the very least, this should be able to prevent Pell Grant recipients from having to take out loans or as many loans and being in debt when they really don't, don't need to be. And I think that's a big part of this program that, that really needs to be advertised. The other thing that I like is that, as you mentioned, the credits are real. David will certainly remember when I was in the legislature, and AP was favored considerably over dual enrollment. And even when we were debating the school grade with the Senate, the Senate's position was that AP should be, and should be entitled to a higher weight than dual enrollment. When we ultimately settled on and compromised, AP students that pass the final exam might be entitled to giving the school a little extra weight, but not everyone that took it. What I call it was, and I still believe this, although others disagree, is the false promise of AP. And that is, a lot of people take AP, but the passage rate on those exams is under 30% statewide, not just here. And so students go into those classes expecting to earn college credit when, in fact, less than a third actually do. These students are going to earn college credit, and they're going to keep it. The other thing that Dr. Brown didn't mention that parents should be aware of is that in the orientation that's required, she and Megan Deputy in particular, literally, don't try to talk people out of taking it, but make sure that they come into it with their eyes wide open. They're taking a college class in the ninth grade. They're starting to establish their college grade point average in the ninth grade. Both of us have had parents call us when, in one particular case, when their daughter, we were denying their daughter the opportunity to be the valedictorian of their high school class because they made a C, and they were going to make a C in the college class, and they expected us to do something about it. So the orientation that comes up front is, is very significant. No parent or student should be able to say that they didn't understand completely the rigors of it, the consequences of it, and the benefits of it when they, when they enrolled. And we hope, again, as Dr. Brown said, we're already in a lottery situation in Orange Park, and probably will be in Middleburg, too. And we hope that that's the way we're going to be here. Last, let us thank you for allowing us to implement this program here, as they did in Clay County when they actually asked us if we could, frankly, they came to us and asked, can we figure out something to help Orange Park High's numbers? Students and parents who had the resources to leave Orange Park High were doing so to go to Ridgeview or to Oakleaf. And this has resulted in a lot of students coming back to their, to their home school. That's the vision I have, at least, for Palaca High, so that Palaca High's school grade, and therefore the county in general, can, can, can rise. And I say thank you for letting us implement this the way we envisioned it, because in St. John's County, that's not the way they allowed it. They had their own way to do it. They knew it better. And now we're dealing with lots of disappointed parents, can confuse people about the rules. And so one of the things that's made this work, two things that have made this work is your willingness, especially through your, the superintendent, to work with us and staff so that we could implement this with fidelity in the way that we thought it could be the most successful. The second is really the heroic efforts of the two principals at the two schools. They're really to be commended. Sure, Interlochen's numbers jump out at you for a reason, but the principal at Palaca High was just as cooperative. They worked just as hard in trying to get us to the right students. And so you should be very proud of many of your principals, as I know, but these two in particular really rose to the occasion, and I want to compliment them as well. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Should we get to the lottery system here in Putnam County? Is there a possibility that somewhere down the road, if I missed, you know, the lottery for the 16 slots, that if someone dropped out or decided, hey, not for me, can we give a call to another student?
There is a waitlist. There is a waitlist. So we, the lottery goes beyond 60. So somebody will know that they're 61, or 62, or 63. And so especially in that first semester, if people decide it's not for them, then they, we certainly slide them in.
Grab that sum and catch up.
And in the meantime, we'll know that those students are interested in dual enrollment, and so we will ask guidance and to start directing them toward their own guided pathway of dual enrollment, hoping that they're kind of staying up in case the opportunity comes for them to come in.
Yeah, I have a, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, I know Melanie mentioned the guidance counselor at Palaca High School, along with...
High School along with our hero, JT, but I wanted to mention that guidance counselor's name, Marlene Drew, I believe is the guidance counselor that works with the...
Ogilvy.
Marlene Ogilvy. She was Drew when I taught her. Ogilvy, sorry. But she, she's been a big help with that.
Again, thank you.
All right. Thank y'all very much.
I was just gonna remind you that one day, I sure hope we could have an opportunity to maybe do a laboratory school type situation with a Title I district and prospective educators at your campus, so.
Sure.
But I know we got enough we're chewing on right now, but you've never been wanting to back away.
I did want to mention one thing that's off topic and that is, we will be coming to you, we'll be asking to come to you in the fall to talk to you about where we are in the implementation of our vocational and technical programs. We are having a two-day executive management team workshop next week. A good part of one of the days is to talk about how and where it's feasible to expand and in what. Rick and I met yesterday and we're now at the point where we have one item regarding insurance to look at before we can have Ed, Hestrom, and Melissa, you know, again, start to lock up the lease for, for that campus. So, we've really made some progress during the summer, especially when Rick and I met yesterday. And so we hope, again, in the fall, we can come back and talk to you about where we are, but more importantly, where we see us going with y'all in, in 2019 and in 2020.
Can't wait.
All right. Thank you.
And while we're doing our acceptance speech, we should thank, we should thank Renee too, because she's amazing.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. All right, Renee.
It's a great opportunity for us to partner with the college and I think we're gonna see dividends in the years to come.
Absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely. Okay. Don't tell so much. Our next presentation is by FEA, the Schultz Center Partnership Presentation, Dr. Simi Rafer, Joanne McCall, and Mark Modle. I hope I said those names right.
I think it's right, yep. Welcome, Board members and Superintendent. I'm on behalf of the Putnam Federation Teachers United. I am very excited today to announce a partnership between the Florida Education Association, the Schultz Center in Jacksonville, and the Putnam County School District. And I've brought some folks here today to make a presentation so they can tell you all about it. We've got Joanne McCall, this is the president of the Florida Education Association, and Dr. Simi Rafer, the executive director of the Schultz Center in Jacksonville.
Wonderful. Thanks.
So, pardon my voice, but this is about as good as it gets. I'm recovering from being a little sick. Good afternoon, members of the school board and Superintendent Surrancey. I am Joanne McCall, the president of the Florida Education Association. It is absolutely my honor to be able to share with you the structure of this project in partnership with your school district, the Putnam Federation of Teachers United, the Schultz Center, and the FEA. Our goal is to assist you in building a sustainable model of school improvement that is based on good teaching practices and tailored to individual school needs. At the FEA, we believe that the people who are closest to the school should be the first people consulted in recommending actions to increase student learning. And the project is built upon that philosophy. The funding to support this work comes from a grant that we have written to the National Education Association's Great Schools Initiative, Great Public Schools Initiative. So rather than trying to prescribe a set way to structure school improvement, our model begins at the school, asking teachers and staff what they see as the best part of their school and how they believe their school can be improved. We can then tailor professional development courses to the needs so that there's skilled and capable teachers as facilitators for high-quality, proven, evidence-based training. So just not any kind of training, but evidence-based trainings because we all know some professional development is just that, it's just points for our certificate. This is very tailored specifically to what the needs of the school are. Our intent is to customize the support to meet the needs of the individual schools. We believe that teachers who face the same or similar challenges in their classrooms are the best ones suited to coach and support teachers in high-need schools because who better than somebody who actually lives it and walks it every day? Last week, three of your teachers attended FEA Summer Academy and they went through the training called Effective Mentoring for New Teacher Support. Other Putnam teachers have also recently attended some professional development that we had in culturally responsive teaching as well as teacher leadership. So you already have some teachers who have been trained in the district that can be utilized as we move forward for this support. As you know, strong mentoring and support increases teacher effectiveness and teacher retention because we don't want to just have good teaching, we want to retain the teachers here in Putnam. And one of the keys to school's successful improvement is having those teachers that are well-trained. Our partnership with PFTU and the Schultz Center aims to ensure the Putnam County School District will be able to increase its capacity to sustain, to sustain school improvement long after this grant period ends. So we don't want to just bring the grant in and, and make some changes. We want to be able to sustain it so that you can keep growing and growing and growing and then replicate it in other places. So we at the FEA are thrilled to be in partnership with the Putnam County School District and our union, our local union here, as well as the Schultz Center. And I'd like to let Dr. Rafer go through, from the Schultz Center, go through the finer points of the project. But we are absolutely thrilled and thankful to be in partnership with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Simi?
Thanks so much. And thanks so much for giving us this opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the program. At Schultz, we were so excited to partner with the philosophy that FEA had, with the notion that the key to school success lies right there in the school. And so, with our partnership, we're not bringing a prescribed program, we're not bringing something that's gonna pancake on top of all the efforts that are already going on. We're here to provide support. So, I've outlined a little bit of the roles that Joanne has already talked about in terms of the, each of the partners. So, FEA's role will primarily be looking at assisting with teacher mentoring and professional development and incorporating the principles of FEA into the work of supporting high-quality teaching in every school. The same thing with your local union affiliate, it's to assist with teacher mentoring and coordination of the facilitators. At Schultz, our role will be to oversee and help manage the project as a whole, but we will also bring, be bringing in our own staff partners to support principals in the support of their teachers. And then the district will work very closely in partnership with you in terms of us having a clear understanding of your expectations of the work and monitoring throughout. So we'll set up a regular system of communication and progress monitoring so you'll know where we are at every step in the process. In terms of what our approach is, we look at four parts of our work plan. The first, supporting strong leadership. It's important, every school has resources of some sort and the key is how do we maximize those because we know there's no magic money tree or resource tree that's gonna have an endless supply of that. So how do you best align the resources to your goal? How do you structure your school in terms of how you organize teachers in the PLCs and in other work groups so that you really, for the time that the teachers are there, that the students are there, are really spent to maximum effectiveness? Our second is to ensure effective teaching and learning. So, we provide support for them for having those conversations after they've gone through, they've done walkthroughs, they're looking at their school and they're looking at their progress. How do you have those deep conversations to make sure that teachers have a clear understanding of, of expectations of their role and what they need to be doing, both in the classroom and as they support each other as colleagues? We also look to strengthen the instructional program. So, part of our conversation, we'll look at the curriculum and we'll look at other supports that may already exist at the school and how well the implementation of those align with how the program or curriculum is designed to be used. Because so many times, once you have several things all going on at the same time, how do you work those together so that they're in concert with each other rather than one conflicting with the other, which can very easily happen once you begin to take things on? And then the lifeblood, as we know, of everything is always data. But many times, you can just get drowned in so many numbers that it's not clear exactly, okay, which one of these is the most important thing that we should be looking at? When should we be looking at certain things? And so we'll also be supporting both the leaders and the teachers at the school to make sure that they are really using their data in a way that drives instruction and doesn't just simply overwhelm.
We'll make you a copy, a hard copy of this, Board.
Yes.
Yeah, because I can't, I couldn't see those little...
Yeah, we'll make you a copy.
I'm sorry.
Well, this, this, what, what, Dr. Rafer is speaking of, this will help, I suppose it'll help principals be able to work with mentoring and coaching teachers to higher levels of effectiveness.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
So, you know, there used to be a certificated program called Coaching Teachers to Higher Levels, but this looks like it'll be, you know, basically a better way of helping the principals get the support they needed, the teachers.
Exactly. FEA brings, as Joanne said, very evidence-based models of professional development that, as we meet and we plan and put the program together, we have shared the curriculums that are available for that training with the schools and they will begin to select the ones that best fit. We know they're just getting scores back, they're just getting a view into what the last year has been and this summer they'll be planning for the next year. And so, they'll, we'll look at calendars, we'll look at schedules, we'll look at the best delivery models for that PD so that it's really job embedded, it's meaningful, it's time-sensitive, so it's, it's something that is, if they need a particular strand of a module, we can deliver it at the time that's appropriate and that the teachers are ready to receive it. Then overall timeline, we've already kicked off with doing a survey with schools so that we can hear a little bit of teacher's voice in terms of a school culture survey and we've started sharing the results with the administrative team and sort of parsing out how they should look at those results and what they mean in terms of things that are really working well in the school and the areas of the school that need to continue to grow and improve based on the perceptions of the teachers. Because we know, as Matt, you can say, oh, no, that's not true, but if people perceive that as the truth, then that is the truth. And so, then getting underneath that to say, okay, what are the things that have led to that perception? And then what can we do to improve it is really the focus. So, this summer will be, we'll begin putting together all those components and timelines of supports that'll come in for the teachers, supports that'll come in for the leadership, and then, as I said earlier, have a regular system of communication, both to the district and ultimately back to the board on how we're progressing throughout the year. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
And we'll be happy to give you, we have a one pager and the PowerPoint that we'll leave with you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's great. Very nice.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes, you may. I was just getting ready to turn things over to you.
For the next presentation, I would like to call up, I'd like to recognize members from the Vulcan Company and I'm gonna ask if Judy Cook and Tracy Johns would mind coming up and Kelly Nash, if you would also come up with them. And I'm, I'm gonna ask also two of our principals, JT Stout and Ashley McCool, please come up front and center. Yeah. And I'd like to just read a little bit of information. If y'all would stand right here and then we're gonna, gonna present you something in just a minute and also take some photos. But I would like to recognize, first of all, the Vulcan Materials Company is the nation's largest producer, producer of construction aggregates, primarily crushed stone, sand, and gravel, and a major producer of, or of aggregates-based construction materials, including asphalt and ready-mixed concrete. And their company has three locations in Putnam County, which includes Grandin Sand Plant, Goldhead Sand Plant, and the Cayuga Sand Plant, if that's correct. I think Goldhead might be in Clay County?
It is.
Right, in Clay County. So, anyway, I just want to recognize members of Vulcan. Mr. Kelly Nash actually has been the liaison between Vulcan and the Putnam County School District, specifically for Browning Pierce Elementary and Palackah High. I would like to read just the contribution they have made to help these two schools, which is quite remarkable. Over the last three years, Vulcan has contributed $18,877.28 to Browning Pierce Elementary, which includes financial contributions towards the school in an amount of $7,500 and they'll continue doing that for $2,500 annually. And also, and I won't read the dollar amounts, but a number of dollars in school supplies and coats and shoes for Browning Pierce Clothes Closet and T-shirts, money for Teacher Appreciation Day luncheon, and also catered, they also paid for food from Magnolia Cafe, and also money for fourth and fifth grade students touring the Grandin Sand Plant this past May. At Palackah High School, they've contributed $28,334, which includes a $15,000 donation to the football program over the last three years and they will continue to contribute $5,000 annually. And then also funds for sand for the sports field, money for T-shirts, and also money for computer, audiovisual equipment, and screens, for a grand total of $47,211.28. So I think that deserves a big round of applause. And with them, our principals are here and I just want to make sure that we know that we appreciate you working with Vulcan as well. And I want to read the certificate, first one, to Palackah High School. This certificate is awarded to Vulcan Industries for your donation to Palackah High School by sponsoring Palackah High School with your generous financial contributions. You provided the staff members and students with continual access to new technologies, supplies, and up-to-date resources. So this is presented, I'll let Mr. Stout present that, if you would.
Appreciate it very much for your help.
Yeah. And this certificate is awarded to Vulcan Industries for your donation to Browning Pierce Elementary School by sponsoring Browning Pierce Elementary School with your generous financial contributions. You have provided the staff and students with continued access to new technology, supplies, and up-to-date resources. And I'll ask Ms. McCullough if she would present that.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys so much. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1728.13]
we have been dealing with some very emotional topics, we've all but thrown parliamentary procedure out the window. And as your chairperson, that is my fault because I let that happen. The main issue, I think, that we need to recognize and rectify as a board is that we talk whenever we feel like it without addressing the chairman. So from now on, please address the chair if you have something you would like to say and be recognized because you know I will recognize you, and then you may go ahead and make your statement or make your motion. Also, please make sure that when you make a motion, it is very clear and concise, so if asked, the chair can repeat it. We must also be very careful about our side comments to one another that we sometimes make. Some boards, I've noticed from watching their meetings, some school boards have a huge dais, and there's a lot of space between each member, so it's almost impossible for them to whisper to one another and make comments. But that's not the case here. It's very easy to do, so we need to be very careful about what we do and what we say in those situations. We've done some wonderful things together on this board, and I don't want our actions during the last couple of meetings to take away from that. So I just wanted to say that before we continue any further. We do have one public comment, and that is from one of my favorite students of all times, Mr. TJ Smith.
While TJ comes up, Madam Chairman, could I say something to add to that?
You certainly may.
I, I don't think it's, I mean, I know it's incumbent on the chair to, to, to take the responsibility, however, this board would not have unanimously voted for you to be the chairperson a second year in a row if we didn't have confidence in your heart and your ability. Now, having said that, can we do a better job? Sure, we can do a better job. And I just, I thought that was, you don't need to take all the responsibility, but as chairperson, I know it feels like it.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
That's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Smith?
TJ Smith, 110 Cat Bay Lane. Thank y'all for letting me come. I had this, I'm not gonna look at it. A year ago, I had a major issue affecting our family and school times. You guys listened to me. I came with a possible solution. You dealt with me, worked with me on it, and he finished up his first year of high school with a three, little over three point nine grade point average. And so I wanted you to know that he didn't waste the opportunity. And we appreciate it. I know you've had some grief the last little while. I wanted to come publicly and thank you guys, along with Ms. Huff and Mr. Stout, for just really kind of having a heart and thinking outside the box, and it really did work good for us.
Thank you so much, TJ.
And thank y'all, and really that's.
Appreciate you coming in and sharing that.
Well, I figured you needed to hear some good.
We did, we did. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys, that was it.
Come back anytime.
And congratulations for your progress this year.
Three point nine. Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you, TJ.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on with the agenda. I'll start with you, Ms. Jorgensen. Do you have anything you'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, I have D four, E six and seven, F one, two, three, and four.
Why, E six and seven.
F. One, two, three, and four. Three, four.
And I one.
I one. Okay. Thank you.
I got all of my questions answered, some very lengthy emails and conversations, so I don't need to pull anything. Ms. Jorgensen?
I just.
I mean, Ms. Cummings?
Yeah.
D, oh, you got D four.
D four.
E three.
E three.
I just had a question about that.
Okay. Mr. Buckles?
I was here earlier this morning, and I was able to get all the things I needed, plus I had our transportation director do a wonderful job in helping with a concerned citizen's transportation problem.
Okay. Ms. Gilliard?
That happened with myself, and Mr. Weaver took care of that for me. I'm still concerned about some of the recommendations of the, of, simply because it just said misconduct, it had a term for it.
What, what, which area?
It's, we're talking about expulsions. F, I'm not pulling it, I'm just saying there were some questions there. Some I understood, but the others, it didn't spell out what it was. It just said misconduct.
Oh, you mean in the letter that they wrote?
Yes, that we read, yes. So, but, but I'm okay with that. I trust the committee, but I'd like to.
Okay.
Well, at some point.
In the future, here's some. We might need to address that.
At some point, we probably needed a, I'm, I'm speaking out of turn, I'm sorry. Can I say something?
Yes, you may.
At some point, we really do need to do a workshop on how things are coded and disciplined, and we got, everything got hijacked by the state security law, and we're now back to what Sandy's talking about. Little things like that are very important, and we need to, we need to get through them at some point, but I didn't.
Well, I mean, is that something we want to go ahead and take care of now?
Well, I think.
To ask the superintendent to please?
They're, they're in a really, I know what it's like this time of year.
They're so busy right now.
I think we could probably wait.
But I'm like September or something.
September would be fine.
Yeah, that would be great, a workshop.
After I'm back.
It's cool in session, they'll have time to put everything together.
Okay, so we're gonna be questioning a September workshop then.
Yes, for our, our discipline policies and how they're coded.
Discipline policies.
Yes, yes. Protoculture, and when someone is put up for expulsion, how those letters are written and what's said in them.
And if, if, you know, you know, everything about discipline that goes from whether a person has been touched in appropriately, or, or, or the way they're being treated. If one school is coding something one way, and the other school is having the child arrested, then those are things we need to look at to make sure we're, we're following things in the right manner.
Well, how about, Madam Chair, the first meeting in September, would that be appropriate?
That's not.
That would be, that gives you time to get school back in session.
Okay.
Ms. Jorgensen?
Madam? Um, I'm fine.
Sad or happy?
No, I was, I was just gonna say to, to the staff, the teachers, and the principals, all of these workshops that they are attending this summer, I mean, they're meaningful, they're fitting in with what is, what they've mentioned in their school improvement plan, and, and they want to do a great job for our kids, so I just want them to know that, that we do understand, and sometimes the grade doesn't tell the whole story.
Oh, yeah. Madam Chair.
On the expulsions.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Sandy, I thought you were finished. On the expulsions, on board docs, there are levels, and cannot all the board members see the entire packet for the expulsions on the highest? Because I know we have clear security to see anything.
Is under your executive section on board docs, you shouldn't even.
Executive session? Section?
Executive section.
I didn't know that.
The packets for the expulsion that.
Packages, we don't put the packets.
Oh, okay.
We're putting the packets on.
All they do is the letter.
There's a recommendation in your final.
So that's why.
We get that.
Yeah, right.
Yes, ma'am, we already get that.
But when it's a five-nothing vote.
Right.
I don't, you know, I don't say anything. If, if I feel differently about something, I feel obligated to bring it to the board because I didn't agree with the recommendation. Other than that, though, yes, I think that these four were warranted, certainly.
Okay. All righty. Okay.
I make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the consent agenda minus D four, E three, E six, E seven, F one, two, three, and four, and I one.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Jorgensen, you pulled D four.
Okay, D four is the organizational chart, and it's very nice, but last year I asked, too, I'd like to see names. I've clearly put names.
I tried to fill by and by myself.
Sure, we, we actually have another copy we can just.
I would really appreciate that.
Some of these may have changed.
Can we email it to you?
Emails are fine.
We have a copy made, we just try to keep it as clean as possible.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Can I question, I didn't know if there was any changes from last year, and I didn't have a comparison, so.
Yeah.
If you could just point them out.
Under, under Associate Superintendent Support Services.
Yeah.
We have separated out Director of Student Services, I think it was separated, but Travis was the Director of Student Services and Safety and Security. Now that has been separated out. Mr. Hestrom is now the Director of Student Services, and Mr. Weaver will still continue to be over Safety and Security.
And he has a lot of work to do.
Yep, I believe that's the only change, is that right, Thomas?
So has it been ta, is it, was there eight last year, or I mean, is there a new position created, is that a new allocation?
I believe that, that was, that new position, which is being funded out of.
Title four.
Title four money.
And actually, I brought that mini orb chart to you guys and presented it, just the way that we were handling seventy twenty-six and just the mental health side of it, and how we plan to do that particular allocation, and the Title Four Grant, which actually funds the Student Services Position Director.
Okay, so it's a new position, but it's funded by Title Four.
Now, the Director of Student Services as a allocation was there before, it was just unfilled.
Okay.
Travis filled both of them, so we didn't have to actually, we added a person, not a position.
So all of these positions are currently filled then, correct?
That is correct. Well, I'll take that back. I take, under Instruction, Director of Teaching and Learning, we are interviewing for that this week.
Okay, that's mine.
And that position should be filled by the end of the week. And that has changed from Director of, is Curriculum, and now there's a new job description for Teaching and Learning.
Right, so whereas we no longer have the West Putnam Direct.
No, we're, we're still gonna have West Central Directors, but they're gonna be people all, already serving in these positions.
Right, right.
Right, and then South will be.
We've done that in the past, in the past year.
Yeah, that, that person will also be, that would not be a new person, I mean, it'd be.
They're fulfilling more than one.
It'd be an existing employee, just filling that spot.
Right.
We're not gonna be creating, creating another allocation per se.
Right.
So the Area Director of Instruction says South, is that just currently for the, I guess that's where I was a little confused, because I knew before we had the, and you just added it on to HR Director, or, but the South.
Laura, do you want to address that since that's under your purview?
There will still be people who will fulfill the position of Area Director, but they are also titled something else. So we still have the Area Director South position, that there isn't another position that's going to go with that, because we changed the Director of Curriculum to the Director of Teaching and Learning.
Okay.
And so the Area Director West will still be handled by Tanya in HR, which is your Director of HR.
Right.
So it's kind of like they have the same.
Yeah.
She will be fulfilling that position as well, and I'll be doing Central.
Awesome. Is that something that maybe when they, when you do add the names, we could just add their other?
It probably would be better for us to put the schools that we support next to that position. Does that make sense?
That would be helpful.
Yep.
The one thing, the one thing that, that is very difficult, and when you look at an organizational chart, is it's, it's always nice to have a couple of unfilled positions, even if it's a principal on special assignment, in case superintendent gets in a jam of some type, the district does, and needs to move people around.
Right.
And, I mean, you can have an agreement to have an unfilled position and not use it unless it's an emergency, but I've had situations where the board would delete all unfilled positions and make it very difficult to come back and try to.
Madam Chair?
Currently, then, just let me clarify. Currently, the organization chart only has the Associate Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Financial Officer, and the directors under them. It is not everyone in the entire district.
Correct, okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Cummings?
The last thing was the School and Safety and Security. I know that for the new Senate bill, we have to name that. Is that something that we've named Travis, is that in accordance to that law, and that is the?
That's correct, and we will be reporting that to the Governor of, for July one.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve item D four.
Second. Oh. Ms. Gilliard, second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is E three.
Um, I just was looking for the job description for, and I could not find that, in a position called, which I was really interested in, and maybe it's something we've already approved. It's called the New Teacher, um, yes, yeah, if you could just maybe help me out with that, and if I miss it, then I apologize, but I see that we did add an allocation for that, and I wanted to hear more about that position.
You actually approved the New Teacher Mentor last year as part of the SIG Four Grant.
Okay.
And SIG Three Grant, we have teacher, new teacher mentors under those two grants.
Okay.
With the new statutory rules on what we must be doing to fulfill the mentorship of new teachers, we're going to hire a few more of those to help with our new employees.
Okay, so at this point, this allocation is adding a, how many do we already have in place?
Uh, we have two under SIG Four.
Okay.
One under SIG Three, which will partially be funded out of General Fund, it couldn't all be funded out of SIG Three this year. And then I believe there's one out of HR that you've already approved, and then this one would be coming out of Title Two.
So there'll be a total of five?
I believe it's five. I'd have to go back and look at everybody, because they're in different places.
Gotcha, okay.
Well, and we'll need at least that many for the.
The requirements for the new teacher, for supporting new teachers is quite, yes, it's very difficult this year. Right?
Perfect, thank you. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve item E three.
Second.
Kathy, second.
Ms. Jorgensen, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is E six.
Okay, I'd like to apologize for not getting my questions answered ahead of time. I had a family emergency and was up till three in the morning doing this, and I just didn't have the opportunity today either to get my questions asked. On RFP, that's the mass departure lease for buses.
That's correct.
And you know, we have to do the Guardian Program, because we don't have enough money for SROs, but we're gonna be paying, what, a half a million dollars a year on buses? Is it something like that?
Yes, but it'll be coming out of capital funds, not general fund.
Okay. And there's no way of using that for anything related to school safety?
No, not for people.
All right, never mind, thank you. I make a motion, we approve item.
E six.
E six.
Second. Ms. Gilliard, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, E seven is the next one.
That's you, Rhonda, I just have a, I tried to get here early and couldn't. It's my silly notes again.
Shannon?
All right, this is a good one. This is a good question, okay? You know, we have to have that.
All of them have been good.
Thank you, but this is a really good one.
Okay.
The three percent mandated reserve, I read, is three percent of the General Fund, not the whole thing.
Right, three percent of the recurring revenue of the General Fund, yes. Recurring revenue of General Fund.
Okay. I don't, I don't understand.
Are you looking at the balance sheet?
I'm looking at the General Fund.
Because it has the three percent mandated, that two point four million?
Is three percent of ninety-two.
It wouldn't be three percent of the entire ninety-two, no, because your transfers in, that's not included, your carryover fund balance is not included, so it's three percent of recurring revenues. So it should be about three percent of eighty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, so there's several things that get pulled out, so it's only strictly recurring revenues a year. I can give you a breakdown of that.
Sure.
What that is.
Sure, sure. I just, when I read, I was reading something, you know, looking for something else, and I read, wait a minute, now all our funds are in, you know, O one hundred.
Right.
And I was.
I want you to set aside three percent of a fund balance you already have, or anything that's a transfer.
Right, but we have to do capital, everything, not just the O one hundred, General Fund.
No, it's O one hundred fund, three percent of the O one hundred, strictly the recurring revenue. I've, I've got the breakdown, I can show you.
All right, yeah, that's fine. I make a motion that we approve item E seven.
Is there a second?[1690.01]
I want you to set aside 3% of a fund balance you already have, or anything that's a transfer.
Right, but we have to do capital, everything, not just the O-100, General Fund.
O-100 funds, 3% of the O-100, strictly the recurring revenue. I've, I've got the breakdown, I can show you.
All right, yeah, that's fine. I make a motion that we approve item E7.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gilliard, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is F1.
No, it's, I'm sorry, it, yes, it is. I'm so confused. Um, this is the Sixth Amendment to the warehouse lease. I can't believe it. It seems like yesterday we made the decision to do this.
Yeah.
Hi.
I, it's just, what is it, 50 grand a year or something? And we don't have money for school resource officers, and I'm just wondering why we spend 50 grand a year on a warehouse.
Yes, ma'am, we did have some concern as well, and, and of course, we don't go out fishing for this, but when we do see an increase, we get concerned like everyone else. So I immediately got on the phone with John and said, what are our options here? If this becomes, of course, we can't build a new warehouse in the next 30 days, but if this becomes a pattern every year, what are our options? And so we start having a conversation about, once again, the old Mosley property, but because of the zoning issues there before, we had issues there and, right, right. And, and I was kind of advised not to, please not to stir up that hornet, hornet's nest again unless we absolutely have to. Uh, but, but the concern remains, and, and I don't see any way of getting around this increase, which is $250 a month, or 3,000 additional a year, and, and we're stuck with that for the here and now. But as we go forward, we certainly need to look at either negotiating that fee or, or just other options here within.
You could.
There's gotta be a way for us to save money, Mr. Bowling, on this.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we're just throwing 50 grand a year away. If we could get a note, we're getting a note for 17 buses. We have property out in West Putnam.
We do, we do.
Mr. Buckles?
I'm done.
As someone who have been through this before, I found it to be much cheaper to rent than to build. Now, long-term, if you've got the money and you can't spread it on anything else, it's certainly, it's good. It's like, you know, you can, you're, you can go ahead and build one, but I, I think you'll, you'll find that you're probably, your lease, and which they, I guarantee you, they will work with you. Because they're, unless they've filled it up, it's somebody here that can tell us is that.
Uh, as a matter of fact, I think John is, and, and he, uh, he could probably echo that point that, that you're making along the lines of, we're using more space than we're actually renting.
We're using a lot more space.
A lot more space.
Oh.
Right, and it is.
Centralized location.
Centrally located, and, and, uh, it's, it's a great facility, and our people are currently, you know, kind of, uh, they're, they're happy where they are. People don't like to move either, but the concern remains, you know, we, it's something that we need to revisit yearly.
It would be, it's something to, I wanna say it's something to look forward to, but 20 years ago, I was looking forward to it. So.
Exactly.
I, I know what you're saying.
Well, $50,000 a year could go towards a note, and in 10 years, we've paid a million dollars.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be probably more than.
Well, that's my idea, and I'm not here.
There may be some, there may be, and, and we could maybe ask the Superintendent to just look at available properties that may be for sale, but I just don't.
What happened to East Palaca?
Well, East Palaca's there. I just, you'd have to, you'd have to have John, because then, once again, you know, look at it, because, once again, you're in a residential neighborhood, and.
Yeah.
We fought the fight with the, the old Putnam Academy being there years ago.
With River Grove.
Oh, my gosh. And, you know, you put a warehouse in there, I think it could be done, but you need somewhere like that that has good access.
Egress, I mean, getting in and getting out and.
13 acres behind Jenkins, uh, you know, the, but then you've gotta try to find a way to loop them out. We looked years ago at property north of James A. Long, because you had ingress to 17 or Egress, and we have looked in West Putnam, but then, you know, it was just so, you gotta have a centralized location for the most part.
And, Madam Chair, ma'am.
Yes.
And I was just gonna remind us of what we're storing there in the warehouse. You told me last year.
Well, just everything that we order, everything from pens and pencils to big marquee signs and, and.
Divvy it out to the school.
Chiller, air conditioning units, you name it, if it comes in this district.
So at any one time, it's full of something.
Yes, ma'am.
We've probably got three times the square footage of what we actually lease, so, you know, to be used, that will, they will let us use.
Not quite that much, but much more.
Not quite, well, it's, it's very, it's exceptionally large.
John, you wanna add anything to that, or is that pretty much gonna come?
I do think we could use a property in East Palaca, I think it is so correct.
Yeah, we looked into that one.
Thank you.
That's something to start looking toward, but, you know.
What it would take to get it shaped.
20 years ago, you just said.
I know, I know, and I wasn't, you know, I wasn't on the board when.
And me, and, and how much money have we paid this guy to put our stuff in his space?
Yeah, when the former Superintendent left the Campbell Building and came over here, I wasn't on the board then, and that was something that was kinda like on the list to look forward to, and I, you know, that was 20 years ago. So time does get by, so.
Well, we'll be on the lookout and continue to keep up.
And see what it would take to get that in shape to.
Thank you, Thomas.
Sometimes it's, it's just a lot easier to lease than it is to build, but it, it does look like a lot of money when you get up around 50 grand a year, it is a lot of money.
With throwing, to me, it's like just throwing it out the window. Okay, well, if somebody wants to make a motion, I don't.
I make a motion, we approve the, uh, item, um, what, what number was that?
F1.
F1?
Yes, F1.
To the sixth, to the amendment to Comfort Road Warehouse Lease.
Is there a second?
Second, because right now, we don't have.
I know, we don't have any place else.
So a second.
Okay.
Yeah, I would hope that we could be proactive in looking.
Yeah, so I think we've, we've asked them to do that.
And East Palaca, again, we, we had a lot of plans for East Palaca.
I know, yes.
Okay.
That was five years ago.
You make a note of that.
Well, we'll, we'll restart those plans.
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next three we can do in one shot, F2, 3, and 4, and for the same reason, we don't have enough resource, money for resource officers, but for whatever reason, we're giving $31,000 to pay for some people, I, I don't know.
Juvenile crime prevention?
Yeah.
She's talking about F2, 3, and 4.
We're paying for three consultants, but not, I don't know. It's her, it totals 31 grand, and I don't know what we're getting.
Mr. Weaver's here to address that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Yes, ma'am. So, um, this is a program, you know, if we partner with CLFC, this is our 28th year partnering with them. And what this is, and this is reoccurring annually, um, one of the consultants is used, um, to review and certify the programs as Level 2 programs through DCF. She actually conducts a review of the programs and certifies them, and also serves as an instructor for the Drug Awareness Program.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the first one, or the second one. It's my, it's my.
She, DCF requires that their programs be proven, so she reviews and certifies. She holds the credentials to review and certify those programs.
Our programs?
Their programs that are used with CLFC, like the Creating Lasting Family Connections, the Drug Abuse and Awareness Programs, those type of programs.
That they provide.
Correct.
And this is.
But they have to be certified.
So the one, the one certified.
So one of, that is one, but that person also, in addition to that, serves as an instructor, the actual facilitator for the Drug Awareness Program.
Is that for students?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. The second one, the one where it's a max of $1,000 paid out, that is a certified instructor that they use for creating lasting families.
Gotcha.
And then the third is the security personnel, the off-duty deputies that are used during all of these various programs.
It happens in the evening.
In the evening, yes.
In the evening.
Yeah, off-duty?
Yeah.
Yes.
Madam Chair? I just was curious, why, if it was after-school hours, why would we not be using our school resource officers for that?
They would probably have already worked a full eight-hour day, so this would be extra duty. These are in the evenings.
And how long is the program at night? I'm just curious.
Uh, they vary, I don't, I don't have the specifics.
I thought it was a two, isn't it a two-hour class, or?
I think some of them are, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
And some of these are required when students have violated drugs, it's some of the rules.
Oh, absolutely, it's part of their punishment.
And their parents are there with them, and they get this training and try, yes.
But that's through the courts. We don't send them there, correct? The courts do.
We, we have the ability to, yes, but it, generally, it comes either through the courts or they're assigned, uh, by law enforcement officers.
Right, and we're paying for it, this part, I don't get it.
Well, this part, it's a shared cost with the, with the SO.
And we've been doing this for 28 years.
I believe this is our 28 years, that sound right, gentlemen?
I, I did say that it is.
Yes, there, yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I guess, I, could we ask for, um, if, I guess, because we would want either our SROs or even the new, we have an extra supervisor to be more involved with this program. Is it one time a night, one night, it's only, I, I guess, could you explain the format more so we could work more with our SROs and try to involve them a little more with this?
I can't speak to that because I don't know these individuals' personal schedules and all, let's see.
Oh, yes.
You wanna step up, yeah?
Yeah, I don't know, Michelle, it just.
So not all of the time, but at least the lion's share, I would say, uh, north of 90% of the time, it's actually our current Youth Resource Deputies that are assigned to the unit who actually sign up for this extra duty and participate, because a lot of them are the ones that have actually written the juvenile civil citations and make the referrals to the program. So they have, they have intimate knowledge of, of why those students may be there.
Right, and that's kinda why I thought of being able to coordinate that. I didn't know who was doing the hours, when they are, and if it was just something that we would be able to coordinate to where they would be able to, I don't know, be part of our, I don't, contract? I mean, is that something we contract with you, or we just write them a separate check?
No, this is, uh, this is considered off-duty, just like if they were to work a football game. We encourage our Youth Resource Deputies to work that, that program, though, because of their intimate knowledge of the program and the students that are participating in it.
Okay.
Makes sense.
I understand, I just wasn't sure about how, so is it something that it's only on a need basis? Because we couldn't say, um, we know we're gonna need 40 hours, uh, a month with this program because it's based upon the referrals of each school?
Well, the program runs continuously throughout the, uh, the school year.
Okay.
Uh, in conjunction with our SWEAT program and Creating Lasting Family Connections, so it's, it's ongoing.
Okay, and it is for families and the child who's been referred?
Yes, uh, well, SWEAT does not require family participation. Creating Lasting Family Connections, there's actually a family component that, that brings the families in with the students together to, uh, to help build those, those connections.
Right.
Okay, because this one, I, the one, the third one I was asking about, I mean, F4 was, it's specifically for security officers, and it was, um, the 27 an hour, so that's why it was up to 20,000. So that was why I was confused about if it's not a set program and it's just something that we'd have on a need basis because of the applicants that are referred to us.
Yeah, and I, honestly, I, I can't speak authoritatively because I don't have the, uh, that particular agenda item in front of me.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, that may also have to do with the SWEAT program that we run concurrent with Creating Lasting Family Connections as well.
And that would be more of a Saturday type?
Yes.
Okay.
They work all over the county on weekends, cleaning up communities and doing, doing.
Officers are also present during the CLFC and the drug.
I've been out and watched them and followed them around a lot.
As a matter of fact, most recently, our, uh, our, our SWEAT kids that were participating in the program on the day of the farm share actually came and volunteered there and helped distribute food, and we got a lot of positive feedback from the community about that as well.
Right.
Ms. Jorgensen?
Um, the contract does say, "This payment is for deputies who provide security for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Office Programs, including Creating Lasting Family Connections, Drug Awareness, and Sheriff's Work Ethic and Training."
Okay.
For the 2018, 19 school year.
Right, again, I just, I assumed, because I knew the SROs did it, I thought this was part of our contract, you know, that we currently have with you, so I don't know if that's something in the future we could just combine it together, or is it, I don't know. It just seemed like it was part of a separate contract, even though it's just part of the duties if you change the outline of what you provide for us, that it would seem like it would be a lot more seamless, but.
No, but we're saving money at 27 an hour, trust me.
Right.
That's, that's certainly much deeper, I can assure you.
Yes, we're saving money at 27.
Especially when you consider what the overtime rate is for a deputy sheriff with benefits.
Right, okay, I was just.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve it.
One through four, or have we talked about all of them?
One we approve. I'll make a motion that we approve items F2, 3, and 4.
Second.
Buckles.
Mr. Buckles seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then I1.
Are those, I don't know who's here for I1, but there's job descriptions, and the first one said NEFAC, and I wanna make sure the second, third, and fourth are also NEFAC. I don't know if you can, I have it. I didn't print those out.
I didn't print, I just, I just read.
I know Ms. Whitehurst's not here.
There it is.
Is this it? Yeah, here's the job descriptions. Coordinator of Foster Care Homeless Students, is that us? That?
That's us, isn't it? Yeah.
Has been in the past.
And these are brand-new ones?
Yes.
Yeah.
This isn't under the, um, Project Praise people?
Project Praise is a specific part out of Title 10.
Right, the homeless students, so this is a different, this coordinator would not be, um.
It would probably be paid with Title 10 funds.
Okay.
But there is a coordinator of foster care homeless, which is a requirement with Title 1 students. And it, the coordinator is not a requirement, but you must have someone that serves foster care and homeless students. And that's, um, that is the, um, that's the job description that Melissa had put forward. Same thing with the Family Engagement Grant Compliance Person, that is, um, we already have the Parent Involvement Specialist that's in there to support, this is kinda like a change of title for that.
So this is in addition to Brad and Courtney?
No, this would be, this would be like a change of what one of their job descriptions would be.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, it's not in addition, it would be a change of a job, job description that they would have to then apply for to change the job.
Are they, so they'd have to apply for?
Well, I, I, that would be a Tanya question, I just know what the job descriptions say.
As far as you know, are, are any of these coming out of General Fund?
Yes, the Data Quality Coordinator would be, yes.
Thank you.
And the, uh.
Data Quality Coordinator.
And I, and I'm assuming the Coordinator for Farmworker Career Development would be coming out of that Farmworker Grant. That's what my assumption would be.
Would the Coordinator of Data Quality work in IT?
No.
No.
She would be working directly with Curriculum and Instruction.
Right, thank you.
Oh, she's already been hired.
I'd say she, it could be, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say.
They would be working with, sorry, I say she, but it's, could be anybody.
So, I'm sorry, back to the coordinator, is that something that's changed? It's something that we currently had under Title 1, those two individuals with the homeless and the foster care? Is there something that's changed in that?
I think it's whether you would like for them to be a coordinator or a resource teacher. Um, they are not actually teaching, um, they are coordinating the services for students. I think it's really trying to change the title so that it actually is in more in line with what they are doing. They are coordinating those services.
So they do have to, they don't just roll into that?
I can't, I can't tell you that, that would be a Tanya question, I'm sorry.
That's what I was just concerned about.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion, we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now, this page turned, it's time to go into emergency session. So we'll go out of regular session into emergency session. Our first item, uh, under emergency items is the selection of an alternate school board member to the Value Adjustment Board. Justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
I was the person that, that was assigned to the Value Adjustment Board, I was the school board rep. And it often, most of the time, it runs to the end of November and into December. And since I've decided not to run again, I won't be available for those meetings. And they have an organizational meeting on July 11th, so I thought it would be wise to replace myself now rather than in the middle of it, so that the new person could be at the organizational.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Sandra Gilliard for the value adjustment board, we have a second.
Wait, let... I would be happy to do it, but I'm not gonna be here on July eleventh.
I'll go with you on July eleventh, I will, I'll go with you on July eleventh.
I went, I went to her place one time.
It's, it's very interesting.
It really is, you'll like it.
Was there a second, Madam Chair, was there a second motion?
Yeah.
Save the box to the chickens.
David, did you, uh, who, did you second it, Kathy?
Yes, I did.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Buckles, and Sandy's friend Kathy seconded it.
Want we to vote against it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I will say that the time that I...
Motion carries.
Covered for Kathy a time or two, or, or someone over the years, and they didn't want me back after that, so...
I wonder why.
That's why.
They like you better, I'm sure.
And they will make me aware of the meetings.
They will, they're very nice.
Oh, yes.
You'll have a county commissioner serving with you.
Okay, the second, um, is selection of school board member to serve on the interlock and planning commission.
Madam Chairman, can I please address that, in the past, we had a school board member, and then when I got elected in two thousand ten, I took it on, and I went and they were like, we never had anybody show up before, and we, I was irrelevant there, it's not a voting position, it's just for information, they're planning council, and I wouldn't have any information for them, so, at the time, it was our director of facilities, Scott Getchel, that the superintendent assigned, but it makes more sense to have someone that knows about our facilities and construction, and I don't know.
And that's not a board member unless it's...
It's not a school board member.
David? Well, I think, um, Mr. Bowlen can address that.
Yeah, it sounds like...
I don't mind doing it.
Oh, you don't?
Right.
Wonderful, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Thomas Bowlen to the interlock and planning commission.
Second.
Second, I can't second, you know. Okay, we have a motion and a second by four board members, Mr. Buckles will, will take his name, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the third item is the renewal of contract for AVID, which is the advanced placement, advancement via individual determination for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year, and justification is that it is time-sensitive.
Well, this is such a wonderful program.
Yes, it is.
It really is.
And the more schools we can have it in, the better off we are.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So, I'll make a motion to renew the contract for AVID for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gilliard seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and we are at the time, oh, we'll get out of emergency session, back into regular session. Okay, there is no unfinished business, under new business, we have discussion input and action on the budget amendments for May twenty eighteen. Ms. Rhonda?
I don't have questions, you don't have to do that. Yeah. Uh, there was not a whole lot of activity, um, in May as far as budget revisions, but in the general fund, we had an increase of revenue of five thousand four thirteen, and five thousand three seventy-three of that was, um, money received from the state for charter school capital outlay monies, and there was also forty dollars donation for the backpack program through payroll deductions, and the capital projects fund, you'll also see, uh, see the five thousand three seventy-three receipt of charter school capital outlay, 'cause we have to transfer them over from, uh, general to capital. In the, um, school food service fund, there were no changes in revenue and various, uh, budget amendments, transfers, and appropriations, but in the fund balance, we see a decrease of five hundred and eighty-five thousand and twenty dollars, and that's because they moved funds from their fund balance to put it into, uh, remodeling projects, they have a lot of work planned, um, throughout the district for summer remodeling projects, and they have been, uh, trying to spend down their fund balance because of audit criticism, so it's work that's needed to be done. Uh, in the special revenue fund, there was no change in revenue, in the internal services fund, NEFAC, there was an increase of revenue of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine seventy-one, uh, the biggest portion of that was a new grant, a contract for private school professional development, the e-learning network, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven sixty, and, uh, the information technology collected more revenue than they had budgeted for, and they brought in the two hundred and eleven dollars extra to, uh, put into account strips to spend, and there, they also had a reduction in the retained earnings, they pulled out thirty thousand dollars, uh, to put into the computer project for scoured annual leases, and in the enterprise funds, which are also, uh, NEFAC funds, there was no change in revenue or fund balance.
Any questions? So, you wanna have a question?
Okay. Thank you.
I move that we accept the budget amendments as proposed.
Ms. Cummings seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The second, um, item is consensus to advertise new policy number five one 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 point oh three, per Neola update seventeen dash two.
Advertise.
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 Do we have to vote?
No.
Okay. The next one is consensus to advertise amendment policies number one two four two, two one two oh, zero, two two six one, two three seven zero point zero one, three two four two, five four six zero, and nine one three zero, per Neola eight, uh, Neola update eighteen point one.
Advertise. Advertise.
Advertise?
Yep.
All five said advertise. Okay, and the last one is the discussion input and action recommended and final order of, order of expulsion for student number five, the hearing was on June fifth, twenty eighteen.
Madam Chair, may I say something, please?
Please, you certainly may.
Um, because this is a matter that involves a student, and because of FERPA, which is the Federal Educational, uh, and Privacy Rights Act, um, we are not permitted to talk about this individual student, I believe that it was made available, uh, the video regarding this was made available to all the board members.
It was, yes.
If you had the opportunity to watch it, that's, uh, fine, if you haven't and you would like to, uh, that's also okay, uh, if the board is prepared to make a vote, uh, it would be appropriate in this setting, but if you want to discuss the matter, uh, such as the actions of the bus driver or the student, uh, if you would like to discuss that among yourselves, uh, because of FERPA and because of Florida statute one zero zero six point zero seven, which specifically exempts this type of a discussion from the sunshine, uh, I recommend that we move that to the executive session that's already on the agenda for today, and we can take it up then.
Well, I can dispense with this quickly, did the board members all see the video, and is there anyone other than me that has a problem with expelling this student from school rather than from the bus?
I don't have a problem with the recommendation of the staff.
Well, yeah, I'm confused on what the recommendation is.
The committee voted to expel him from school for a year.
We might as well go to executive session.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's go to executive.
I thought it was, yeah, I was, I'm very confused, 'cause I watched the video, and I was told by Mr. Weaver it was concerning the female in that, so I do need some more information on that, so I would appreciate that.
Yes, I had wanted to pull the mail, right.
Yes.
And I understand why.
We have to go to executive session.
Because years ago, I used to have to stand here and present cases to the board on students that we expelled, and you'd have to read stuff verbatim, and it was horrible, so...
Okay, so we're going, do we have to make a motion to move it to executive session?
No, upon the advice of our attorney.
Okay. Okay, well, then we'll move on now to...
Oh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, we, we approved advertising, I'm gonna re-ask my fellow board members to carefully read number two, two three seven zero point zero one, which deals with virtual instruction, and thirty-two forty-two, which deals with something else instruction, and that's not my forte, I would appreciate if you educators would take a careful look at those two, I've read them all, but again, that's not my forte, I would...
Well, what, 'cause I read it, what did you want us to play close to?
I just wanna make sure everybody reads it.
Professional development, it dealt with professional development.
Professional development and virtual instruction.
Virtual instructions, yes.
I just wanna make sure everybody who knows about it puts their eyes on it, because I really don't know anything about it, so thank you, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, all right, um, Ms. Gilliard, do you have a board report?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Buckles?
I'm fine.
Ms. Cummings?
I'm good.
Well, the only thing I have to say is that I'm leaving on a jet plane to New York tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, and hopefully, by this time next week, I'll have a grandson. Ms. Gilliard? Uh, I mean, Ms. Jorgensen, sorry.
You're already in, in there.
I am, I have been for about two weeks.
First grandchild, yeah.
I'm, I'm requesting a workshop to be held as soon as possible regard, to address the requirements of Senate Bill seventy twenty-six, there are a lot of things that the board shall do, and policies that shall be written, and there are deadlines on some of these policies, some says the superintendent shall, and others says the board shall, but there are a bunch of policies that have to be written, particularly about the Guardian program, so, we need to work, have a workshop, please, as soon as possible on that.
Well, let, let's go ahead and decide.
Okay.
Oh, okay, because we already have one in September.
But we need to do it, the first board meet, oh, well, I won't be here, I'd like to be here.
Well, these are the requirements of seventy twenty-six, we had to vote on the Guardian program before you left.
Well, actually, we're, we're, I don't...
Couldn't wait till you got back for that.
I actually think that we're, the final vote on the Guardian program required that all this be taken care of by the administration, so, I don't know why we would want to go to a workshop, but that's up to the board, majority of the board.
Well, I can go through my list if you'd like.
No, I don't, that's up to the majority of the board.
I'm serious, I'm not kidding.
The chairman handles who does what.
And there's the sticky notes, I've gone through the whole thing, but...
Would y'all like to schedule?
It's up to the majority of the board, I really need to remember.
We might have to schedule one.
Okay, let's, um, let's go ahead and schedule it, uh, since I'm not gonna be a player in it, y'all go ahead and decide when you would like for it to be.
As far as I'm concerned, it should be around Nikki's schedule, 'cause she's the single parent here and has children, and it's summer.
Well, and she's the vice chairman.
I remember well.
Madam Chair, I just wanna point out, it was handed to me, Neola's gonna come out with some updates on Senate Bill seventy twenty-six this month, come in.
They haven't come out yet, but they are...
So, I would assume we want to have that in our hand prior to, um, a workshop, I'm asking, if you would like to have that.
Until Ms. Crawford gets back.
Yeah, but that's not gonna be until July thirty-first. Do you want to schedule it as soon as the Neola policies come out?
That's what I would say.
I don't want anything, I mean, whatever the majority says, I want a workshop ASAP to deal with these twenty-six stickers that I have on, now, if Neola's covering some of it, great, wonderful, but we're obligated as a board to a lot of stuff that's in this bill besides just approving the Guardian program.
Right, right.
And I think we need to get right on it, because some of them have deadlines, and I'd like to make sure we're doing, as a district, the other things in this bill that we're supposed to be doing, that's all, now, it's up to the majority of you three.
Necessary, couldn't you be on conference call, not in chair?
Absolutely, unless it's, unless I'm in a delivery room.
Yeah, so, we wanted to wait for that, but if they're not...
I would prefer, go ahead, Sandy.
I was just gonna say, if they, if they're not here, let's say, the end of June, then let's go ahead and, and schedule it and work through what we have, but hopefully, they will be out before that time.
I would prefer that the superintendent and Mr. Weaver and superintendent's staff, uh, since the board selected the process, that, that they get together and comply with all these, uh, with the law as soon as we have an interpretation through Neola, and then report back to us, because we're just gonna meet on things that we don't even need, we don't even know that are gonna...
I'll just bring my questions up, under board member reports at the next meeting, so expect a long one.
No, no, I think, because there's specific...
I don't know what else to do.
No, I think it's appropriate, especially since there are specific things that, um, our risk management has asked, and it's board policies and procedure that have to be implemented.
Would you like one of our next meetings in July, would you like one to schedule alongside that meeting, and if we get the policies before then, and I could, I could call you, and, or do you wanna schedule it before then?
It's up to everybody else, majority rules.
There's some things that, as far as, um...
Can we call for a vote?
The insurance, that, um, written Guardian program parameters, written program plans described almost.
And actually, just along those lines, we, uh, at the July meeting, we, we will be bringing to you the SRO contract and a, um, an MOU between us and the sheriff's office reference the Guardian program, which involves liability insurance and that type of thing, that's, that's being drafted now, we want our attorneys to look at it prior to the meeting, but that, our plan is to bring it to the July meeting.
Okay, Ms. Jorgensen?
We did not approve the contract with the sheriff at the last meeting?
We, no, the, the contract has not been approved yet.
What was option six of the task force?
I don't, I didn't bring that with me today, because I didn't think...
The contract has not come before the board, the, the approval was to...
I saw it.
I didn't see it.
Two more SROs and one more supervisor to, for all of our safe school funding.
That was the plan.
I think that was the, uh, the motion, the motion that, that was voted on the last time, just getting back to the workshop, um, you know, and we're kinda bouncing around, just so we can be prepared, could you send any specific questions that you have directly to me, and I'll make sure that we're prepared, and, and, uh, the major components are school hardening, which we're developing a plan for, um, the mental health component, which we're developing a plan for, and of course, the Guardian program, uh, but any other, there's lots of other little odds and ends along the way, dealing with insurance and things of that nature, so, if any of you have any particular questions, send them to me, so we can put it in one PowerPoint.
Well, could you, once you get all the questions, send us an email with...
Certainly.
The questions that each, each board member sent, because I would like to see them.
Yes, but if you want a workshop, we, we're glad to hold a workshop and provide you that information, that's not a problem, but, um, if you wanna wait till we get these policy updates, that's fine too, but what is it?
Two o'clock, July nineteenth, I mean, when is our, our next meeting?
Your next meeting is on the seventeenth.
Seventeenth of July.
Why don't board members, if you have questions, submit them to the superintendent to be asked, answered?
Thomas teaches this.
And then let us, let us then, if we have any concerns...
Well, then you can meet back, you can have a workshop on the seventeenth, unless...
It's kinda like form over substance, we're gonna meet on things that people are going to, to be, to be doing for us.
But they have some questions they want answered, I don't see anything wrong with that.
I got you, I got you.
And with, and with, um, Mr. Bowlen sending us, as you requested, the questions that, that are being asked, because we cannot discuss it together, this gives us an opportunity just to look at it, 'cause we, we want it to run smoothly, and we wanna understand.
We have to watch the sunshine law, because you can't break the sunshine law, you can violate the sunshine law through Mr. Bowlen, so we have to be careful.
Right.
We can send him our questions, but I think that should go to the workshop.
But that's why I asked him, well, I asked, I mean, I would like to see the answers, he doesn't have to say who sent the questions.
Right.
He could just come up with the list of, you know, complicate the list of questions without who asked it.
Sure.
And send it with the answers.
And then when he's got the answers, send, send it to him.
I'll leave Charlie for clarification.
That's fine, that's appropriate.
Yeah, as long as we're not talking to each other.
Yeah, that we're not sending emails back and forth.
Exactly.
Correct.
That would be wonderful, thank you very much.
So, is the seventeenth soon enough?
You're gonna be able to put everything, well, I guess, that's, I mean, it's up to the majority of the board, I wanted it on Friday, 'cause that's my next available day, but if, if nobody else thinks it's that urgent, have it in July, I really am not that committed to it.
We've really meant that, that we met the state mandate to go ahead and proceed, and we have staff that should put this to proceed.
Yeah, but the school hardening's...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was able to attend the safety meeting with, um, Mr. Weaver in St. John's County, and there are so many other aspects, they discovered that, that, I mean, the, the mental health aspect, the school hardening, and I know that our team is, is very diligently working on it, but as a board, to have this quick board, um, consent agenda item to just approve it, like, we did have a workshop to discuss this, and we did, Mr. Bowlen did a great job of trying to show the mental health aspect, but there are, the Senate bill lays out so many specific details, and rather than trying to put that in one document on a consent agenda, the workshop is necessary to show where the growth is and where the code of conduct has changed, we've had to change our enrollment sheet and how we ask kids if you've ever had, those are things that we have to be made aware of, and it's a lot of small details, so I don't think it's anything we would not be doing our due diligence if we just set a consent agenda, and everything on Senate Bill seventy, sixty, uh, twenty-six has been approved, so...
And it may take more than one workshop.
Yeah.
No, I was gonna say, they're not gonna have answers on risk management.
It'll take more than one year.
Ever.
Right, and there's really...
But if you remember, the man that you had speak, or someone had speak, and I'm trying to call his name.
Carl.
Carl, he, he mentioned Dr. Vicky Buckles, I happen to know her, and as being somebody that could be very beneficial, if you have any questions, maybe you could call her, 'cause I think she's, I don't know what she does, anybody know what she does with the state? Nobody really does, but he seemed to...
I've spoken to a few people of the state.
Okay, yeah, and so she might, 'cause if you guys could get in touch with her, could Okay, yeah, and so she might, if you guys could get in touch with her, could probably answer your question, because mental health is one of the biggest deals that we're dealing with. It really is.
Thinking about time and, you know, how long our workshops typically are, are there certain things that you would like to discuss at the first workshop and get answered, instead of having this, you know, huge list of questions? You know, do we want to focus in on one, do we want to focus in on mental health at the first workshop, or do we want to focus on school hardening, or the mandates about insurance?
Right, policies and procedures.
Insurance, we're not going to have a choice. We're going to have to have whatever risk management says we have to have, and the state requires.
Risk management is what I was looking for.
If we're going to deal with mental health, that should be a separate issue because that's a big issue, and I thought that gentleman Carl did a wonderful job that day, but until Neola clarifies the policies and make them congruent with the state, the new law, we're not going to really know what we're...
I know, but we still have mandates that we're going to have to meet.
There's lines on some of this stuff.
Madam Chair, if I could say, we're actually, Mr. Hedstrom has actually been involved in attending some of the meetings on mental health as our new student services director, and, you know, and I know he's also in the process of hiring people for the mental health positions and all. At whatever point you have the workshop, if that's what you want to focus on, he could bring back.
Well, I would just like to be able to tick off all these things that...
Right, and that's what we're working on as well.
And I've talked to prospective mental health employees that have gone to, you know, the personnel. I mean, they're ready. They're going, and I think Mr. Hedstrom will be hiring, or may already have hired, but as far as telling them how to counsel, and they're going to do it, I think it's good for the board to know how they do it, but...
Well, I don't think, those are our questions. That's not what...
I know, you're talking about 7026 and how we're meeting the deadlines and the requirements.
Yes, that's, yeah.
Well, that's what I want to address also.
I've sent Mr. Bowlin my list. Anybody else who has questions, they're probably, they may be duplicates from mine.
Right, and then he can...
And you combine them and send out the answers, and then, we want to have a July 19 workshop? Does that work for everybody?
17, when the board meeting is.
I'm just trying to find a happy medium, whatever, but I'm just trying to do my...
Madam Chair, the meeting I was talking about that Mr. Hedstrom is attending is actually the one, the regional meeting with the governor. The governor's required for us, which is part of the requirements of 7026. Maybe he could address that for us now.
I went to a meeting where the executive order and so on was how more the sheriff's office, the DJJ, all going to come together more closely and communicate better, okay? We also, me and Mr. Bowlin, went to a meeting, spoke to 726 on the mental wellness and how we were going to come up. They gave us, from the state, gave us direct orders. We were going to go with Mr. Bowlin's plan that he has, but there's specifics, like you're talking about, that the state gave us guidelines, and I have a meeting tomorrow with Stephanie Weldon, who we've hired as our head coordinator.
Stephanie Weldon?
Weldon, yes, and so we are going to meet with her tomorrow. I've already given her those bullets, because she wasn't hired before that meeting, so she has that. We're going to put that all in place, and we will have it at that July 17 board meeting, because it has to be board approved, and then that has to be to the state on August 1. But we've got a plan where we're going to do all, that's only the wellness part of that. There's a lot of other in there. So, I didn't know what y'all were talking about, but I will tell you.
I'm sure that was one of my questions, because I remember August 1.
August 1, it has to be sent to the state.
Yes, sir.
And we have a guideline, and we're going to be working on that, along with exactly how that mental wellness plan will look out within the district. Y'all will get to look at that and get to vote on it at that time.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
One of the other, one of the other aspects that I know we have discussed is the school hardening grant, and when that had to be submitted, and I don't know if Rhonda knows that or the date, but that would be another aspect. I could email you, but as far as applying for the grant, what specifics we are looking into and trying to secure that, those dollars.
They're just starting to send a little bit of guidance that speaks to that, and it looks like, just very quickly, it looks like good news, and Rhonda can speak to it a little bit more. If you apply, you'll pretty much get the money.
Good.
Rhonda will probably tell us how much it is, but it's just a matter of getting the documentation together and submitting it to the state. That speaks to exactly what we're asking for, and if we don't send it, they'll be reaching out to us saying, why did you...
Which, yeah, which...
Finance council was on Tuesday, and DOE and the staff, and they do expect every district to submit that grant, and they said that if they didn't hear from a district, they would be reaching out to the district to see why. The funds will, every district will be guaranteed a minimum of $100,000. The rest is based on capital outlay.
Was that the wellness part?
For our district, just do an preliminary, look at it that day, we will get about, I think it was $406,000 for hardening.
Okay.
We do have to submit that plan and everything, but they're going to be right on top of everybody to be sure everybody gets their plans in, and I don't have the deadline.
The deadline for that is in December, and I don't think they'll even come out with a template, and I'm going by memory, but I don't think the template will be available until sometime in August, so that's something that we're collecting.
Okay, that would be something.
But we can't actually start to...
So, the school hardening could maybe be addressed at a little bit later date. So, if we wanted to address policies, procedures, as far as the contract and the Guardian program, and then maybe the mental aspect that Mr. Hedstrom at the first workshop, and then the second one, maybe have the school hardening dollars.
That's a good idea.
Madam Chair, could I get the time you want the workshop on the 17?
Well, the board meeting's at 3:30, and y'all need to have 1:30, too? What do y'all think?
1:30.
1:30?
I want a break. I don't want to stop at 3:25 and start...
Madam Chairman, can we get through board member reports, and let's move on?
I think we were trying to, Mr. Bowlin.
Okay, because we drifted away from the question and got on...
Well, I requested a workshop.
Oh, I had, other board members got, I'm just thinking about Robert from Moore a little bit.
Well, we just scheduled the workshop. Would the majority of the board like me to draft something? We had talked about changing our policy on board committee selection, so I can draft something and bring it to the next meeting, and...
I'd like to see it.
Okay, under discussion and input, no action, please.
And so, this is for...
When the board wants a task force, who's going to pick the members? Because we had a Neola template that was designed for boards with appointed superintendents, not elected, and it's very different when it's an elected superintendent. Just everything is different.
So, you're not talking about, like, how we pick who's on the insurance committee and who's on the...
My idea, actually, I know David is bored, but I'm sorry.
I'm not, I can't be...
It's my board member report, David.
I'm thinking.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, my goodness. What I was thinking is, okay, that it be six, 12, 18 members, and if it's six, the five of us and the superintendent each appoint somebody. If it's 12, we appoint two. If it's 18, we appoint three.
Yeah, just draft something.
I will draft something, and if we could put it on the agenda under new business for just discussion and input.
And no vote?
No vote. We're going to have to advertise it, but we will do that if we work it out and if people want to advertise it.
Okay.
And the last thing, David, last, last, I promise. I just want to say how wonderful it is that we have people like, we have organizations like the college and this FEA and Schultz Center, Mark went home, but God bless him for doing that. That's going to be wonderful. And Vulcan support, and we just have so much support from so many businesses and organizations that we're just really blessed that way, and I just wanted to give a shout out to all the people that helped Putnam County School District, and I'm done. Thank you.
Board attorney?
The Friday and Saturday before last, I attended the Florida School Board Attorneys Association Conference in St. Augustine, and it was a great conference, attended by a majority of the districts around the state, from the largest districts, Miami-Dade, Broward, to smaller districts like itself, and on everybody's mind was 7026 that took up most of the conference. It was a busy legislative session. A lot of the districts use Neola there, and Neola is working diligently to create policies that are required from the legislative session, not just from 7026, but other bills that were passed that required policymaking, so we will see more of that from Neola very soon. Also, the Florida School Board Association meeting was last week, and a representative of the legal team, Linda Campbell, was in attendance and came back with some good items. So, that's all for the board.
Is that something she would be able to maybe do a presentation or a report for us on that?
Sure, yes.
That would be great, because I believe the conference was on...
Yeah, there was.
7026, basically, so that would be great if she would be willing to do that.
Sure.
Would we want it, or do you want to have her in an email and a presentation, or do we want to...
Email's fine with me.
Yeah.
You won't have to pay her.
Sure will. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I also attended the FSBA FADS conference, and actually, the superintendents meet separately most of our meetings, but we did meet Damian Kelly, our new security director.
Oh, good.
He was there with the commissioner, and he's kind of doing a visit around the state. He's visited a lot of districts, and if you'd like to, I'd extend an invitation to come by here. Not sure how soon that could happen, but I think he was really just getting his feet wet and was fielding a lot of questions that he didn't quite know all the answers to, but I do think...
If he came here, I mean, would it be in a situation where you could ask questions?
Sure, yeah. So, if you'd like me to, I'll extend an invitation. It may be months before we could get him, but I know he's sitting in a lot of the big districts now.
He might have some answers by the time he got here.
Yeah, but I will definitely extend that, and depending on his schedule, maybe he could stop by. I do have materials for you. I believe Ms. Cummings requested some test score information, and I do have some handouts for you before you leave today, and I'll share those with you. And our test scores did come out. We are calculating, I mean, we're analyzing them. We have done some unofficial calculations, but as you know, school grades have not been officially released, and I think I communicated with you on that. We just wanted, we have some unofficial ideas, but the official grades won't be released till July, so, you know, we're not really sharing any information now until those official grades come out. But I will say, overall, I've been very encouraged by some of the improvements from last year, especially at the middle school level, so I think as you get the handouts, you'll see specifically by grade level, you know, where our strengths are and areas that we need to work on in our different content areas. So, overall, I just want to thank our schools and our principals for working diligently this past year to work on those test scores, so I think we're heading in the right direction, and that's all I have.
Okay, we'll adjourn this meeting and let everyone clear the room before we start our executive session. We'll take about a five-minute break.